Troy Dunning, your host. It is 1:30 and we are live and recording.
Okay. We'll see if I can... okay. Troy, thank you very much. Welcome to everyone. I know we do have an invocation today from Pastor Michael Finn from Christ Life Community Church. Pastor?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Layden, Commissioner Teal. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Finn. I live in Parker and I'm the pastor of Christ Life Community Church just up the road in Franktown. Thank you. Thanks to all of you and the employees of Douglas County for the work you do, the time you give for our community. I know it's a big responsibility, so thank you very much. In the Bible, in the Old Testament book of Jeremiah, the Lord spoke through the prophet to his chosen people who had just been conquered and were now living in exile in Babylon. Jeremiah's words to them back then and there are also God's words to us today. Jeremiah, chapter 29, it says, "Thus says the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, 'To all of the exiles whom I have sent into exile from Jerusalem to Babylon. Seek the shalom of God, the shalom, peace, and prosperity and blessing of God for the city to which I have carried you into exile. Pray to the Lord for the city, because if the city experiences the shalom, peace, prosperity, and blessing of God, you too will experience the shalom of God. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans for shalom, peace, and prosperity, not for evil, to give you a future and a hope. Then you will call upon me and come and pray to me, and I will hear you. You will seek me, and you will find me when you seek me with all of your heart. I will be found by you, declares the Lord, and I will restore your fortunes.'" Lord God Almighty and gracious Father in heaven, I believe that for our city, for our county, and for our community, and for our nation, you want for us what you want for every community and every nation: shalom, peace, prosperity, and blessing, not evil, but shalom from you. Lord God Almighty, gracious Father in heaven, I thank you for these commissioners, and I pray for your blessing on them and your wisdom in them as they serve and they lead in the important business of our county. Oh Lord, impress upon each of them a deep sense of the great privilege they have to serve, the immense power they hold over people's lives and livelihood, and the awesome responsibility and accountability they have to us as citizens of this county, but even more so to you as their sovereign creator and ultimate judge. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Finn. It's now 1:33 PM. I'll call this meeting to order if you all stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Angles, do we have certification of the agenda today?
We do, Mr. Chair. My office has reviewed all items on today's agenda and they all meet legal approval.
Thank you, Mr. Angles. Do any commissioners have disclosures for items on the agenda?
I have none. Thank you.
No, sir.
I have none either. I know today we have a very special presentation from Marcia Alston and the Student Advisory Group Youth and Mental Health Group with their presentation. Marcia?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Marcia Alston with the Douglas County Youth Initiative. I am very, very happy to introduce to you today Awadatia Santilkumar. I've been practicing that all morning.
Good job.
And they are very gracious and helped me as well. Awadatia is a freshman at Thunder Ridge High School and a member of the Douglas County School District Student Advisory Group, or SAG. I learned last year that that group had a mental health subcommittee. SAG works on several different issues and items. They then present those issues and their solutions to the Board of Education. So they are a Board of Education-appointed group. Well, we are going to get a sneak peek because tonight at the Board of Education meeting is when they're going to do their presentations. So we're actually going to get a scoop on that. And I'm going to turn it now over to Awadatia to give us the presentation of the findings of the Student Youth Mental Health Subcommittee Group. Awadatia.
Can we get our presentation?
Yes, the presentation should be coming up. I don't know if Doug is here or anybody from IT. I see someone getting up. Thank you.
So hello to all of our commissioners, and my name is Adita Santilkumar. And as Ms. Alston mentioned, I am a member of the DCSD Student Advisory Group, and I'd like to thank you all for your time today. And I'd like to speak to you all about student mental health and what we found to be important with regards to student mental health. So this year, the DCSD Student Advisory Group partnered up with the Lone Tree Youth Commission in order to provide a more broad perspective on mental health and to figure out what exactly our district needs to promote student mental health. And with this collaboration, we were able to find more student voice and we were able to get more of what we needed done. We were able to get more content put into our mental health course, which I will be showing to you soon. And our problem that we identified is that we have an alarming rise in mental health issues across the country. And according to the CDC, approximately 5.8 million children aged 3 through 17 have diagnosed anxiety, and 2.7 million children have diagnosed depression. And our school counselors are unable to deal with this rise in mental health issues. At Thunder Ridge High School, we have a great team of counselors who are able to provide for our mental health needs, but other schools may not have such opportunities. So we created this course to promote self-help and to allow students to help others. So in this course, we'll be creating a standardized mental health course across all DCSD high schools, which teaches on mental health issues, coping mechanisms, and self-help in helping others. And this allows students to help their friends and even themselves with the issues which they may not be able to see a counselor or a mental health professional for. And listed, there are resources and people who we consulted in order to create this course. And we have Jason Hopkes, a representative from the National Alliance Mental Health Illnesses. We have Michael Christopherson, the school psychologist at Mountain Vista High School. We have Ms. Nikki Ballou, the principal of Thunder Ridge High School. We have Ms. Kristin Kovak and Ms. Lauren Roybal, two counselors at Thunder Ridge High School. We have Ms. Marshawn Yuhas and Mr. Chris Smith, who are administrative deans at Thunder Ridge High School. We have Dr. Stephanie Crawford, the DCSD Director of Mental Health. And we have Ms. Kayla Fahy, the Director of Health and Physical Education at Thunder Ridge High School. And the need for this course, DCSD currently does not have a mental health course for our students. We have a Healthy Decisions class and we have psychology classes, both of which don't directly address mental health, but rather address the history behind psychology or the physical aspect of health. But we need a more mental health-focused course. And with this course, we'll be getting a new innovative, stress-free approach to mental health. We'll be creating a positive environment for students across all of our schools. We'll have an impact on the community, and we're prioritizing student and staff well-being. And here's a course overview. We'll be covering brain biology and neurotransmitters. We'll be covering healthy relationships, bullying prevention and kindness, illegal substances and addiction, mental health disorders, coping strategies, and self-care and helping others. And as I covered before, we're going to take a new innovative and stress-free approach. So this grading system was created by me and other student Elijah Morgan from Thunder Ridge High School and two Thunder Ridge High School counselors. And we're minimizing the amount of assignments in that course and ensuring that students have an opportunity to focus on what matters to them most. And we'll also be ensuring that no past trauma is triggered by this course. And the grading breakdown is shown above, which is our approach to a stress-free environment for learning mental health. And those are the members of the Student Advisory Group who helped us come up with this course. And as you can see, they're from both the Student Advisory Group and the Lone Tree Youth Commission, and they're from many different high schools representing all of our views. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time today, listening to me talk about mental health for students. Thank you.
Adita, thank you very much. Let's give him a round of applause. Questions or comments from the board, from Marcia or Adita?
We will not sing to that.
Well, no questions. It looks like great information. I mean, I really appreciate you putting this together and, you know, providing your perspective on how your education should proceed. So, well done.
Thank you.
I appreciate you bringing this to us, sir. You know, one thing you said that I really thought was thoughtful and insightful is that you said you want to make sure that this program does not trigger any past trauma. And I thought that was really important, that you are aware of that. I was the county coroner for four years, and I sat in far too many kitchens with families who just lost a loved one, including students. And I have a nonprofit that raises money for suicide prevention for kids through Second Win Fund, and I know that Second Win Fund does provide therapy for students here in Douglas County. So a lot of people know there's a problem, and I want to thank you and the others who step forward to try and solve a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, don't run away, because I really, I want to acknowledge the incredible leadership that you've demonstrated coming here before all of these fine members of our community and the Board of County Commissioners. You're the future of this county, and your investment in yourself and in your colleagues is really to be commended. The county has a deep commitment to mental health, particularly for the youth among us, and I want to acknowledge Marcia Alston and her years of service dedicated to the Douglas County Youth Initiative. And this curriculum looks fantastic. We often hear about the value of peer support, and when people your age can connect with other people your age, that seems to have a really significant end-market difference. So thank you very much for presenting today. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And we won't mention to our friends across the street that we got this ahead of time, okay? But good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move into item two on our agenda for today, which is citizen comment and organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and address prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. And then commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comment in the room today? Yes, ma'am. If you want to just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Christine Frigo. I live at 6210 Oxford Peak Lane in Castle Pines Village. I recently moved here from Illinois, where I've served on local boards and commissions and as a director and officer on two education foundations. I'm used to being on both sides of the dais, running meetings and attending roughly 1,500 of them in just the last 20 recent years. Our public meetings for village council and the county were held in the evenings, scheduled to be inviting for everyone, including working families. When there were very large numbers of speakers, the mayor or county chairman asked that comments be respectful of everyone's time. They averaged five to six minutes and rarely, if ever, approached eight to 10 minutes. Two weeks ago, I was here for a hearing with about a dozen of my neighbors. After a lengthy presentation by the applicant, we addressed you during our allotted time of just three minutes each. Most took time from work to come speak that day. For some, it was the first time they ever spoke in public. In addition to that being intimidating, the compressed time limit and the countdown clocks that you post here exacerbated that, as speakers were stopped sometimes mid-sentence when their time ran out. It felt overly restrictive and frankly suppressing the public comment, which I know is not your intent. I share that with the hope that you can understand and respect that and see things as your constituents do from the side of the dais. After public comment ended, we sat as you did and listened to the developer, once again, this time more than 60 minutes, primarily with some repetitious information and conjecture, admitting that he was veering off on tangents, his words. Uninterrupted, he was allowed to challenge and contradict information that we'd recently received directly from the county and from the metropolitan district without any opportunity for clarification or rebuttal. It felt like a filibuster. It also felt condescending and at times a little insulting. I understand that it's been your custom and practice, not part of Robert's Rules of Order or county code, to limit resident comments to be this brief. I also understand and respect the process and meeting flow, and just as importantly, having a complete and accurate public record. The first headline on the Douglas County website is written in large and bold type. It reads, "Citizen Engagement Is the Heartbeat of Effective Local Government." Commissioners, the brief three-minute limit for public comment doesn't encourage participation or engagement. Frankly, it stifles it. These public meetings are held in the middle of the afternoon, making it difficult, if not impossible, for people working or with school-aged children to attend. Your constituents all want to be engaged and have their voices heard on the record. I've come today to ask you respectfully to please reconsider this rigid commission-adopted rule. Your agenda and sign-in sheets will allow you to evaluate and manage time and flow. The chair always has discretion to adjust time for all speakers, especially since you deal with only a handful of residents that regularly come to public meetings. I hope you'll be much more open to truly engage as citizens who come to share their views on the record. Please consider abating and amending this restrictive rule to allow for more open and free-flowing discussions during your public meetings. I welcome your response, and thank you very much for letting me address this today.
Thank you, Ms. Frigo. Appreciate it. Do we have additional comment in the room today? Troy, do we have any comment online?
Hugh Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any commissioner comments.
I'll be happy to speak. Thank you, ma'am, for bringing your ideas to us today. I mean, this being my second elected board I've been on, I can tell you, in the state of Colorado, there is no requirement for public comment. Other states do have that codified. Here in Colorado, there is no requirement. And a couple of years ago, I was at a, in my prior duties, I was representing Castle Rock at the Colorado Municipal League. And we were in a seminar discussing public comment, and the facilitator of the seminar asked everybody to raise their hand who allowed public comment during their meetings. And I was really absolutely shocked to find that my hand was raised, of course, because we allowed here in Castle Rock at the municipal level. My town manager's hand was raised, and then there was only like five or six other hands raised out of a room that had almost 100 people in it, who were all either, you know, municipal employees or municipal elected officials. So, and it was, and then a very vigorous discussion began among the participants that I think the consensus was to not allow for any public comment, which I assure you, I share your sentiment. And it really fired me up to make sure that we would always preserve public comment, at least in the town of Castle Rock. I think one of my first comments upon being sworn in and meeting with my colleagues was us preserving public comment. We did talk about duration, and I can tell you right now, I'm willing to talk about re-discussing that. It's something we've discussed several times up until now. And then, of course, you know, you talk about meeting in the evenings to facilitate participation. And we're having discussions pertaining to our town halls and how we've had town halls that were really pushing information out to the public, and then other town halls that involved formulating policy. I think we probably want some legal advice in terms of town halls that would cover land use meetings, just because those are defined and constrained in their nature in Colorado law. But I'm open to it. I mean, I would, if it pleases the board, Mr. Chair, perhaps that is a topic of discussion we can have of what we can do in terms of perhaps introducing land use to town hall meetings, because, ma'am, that's what it was. And that was quite frankly why the applicant was afforded unlimited time under Colorado law. The applicant for a land use, a property right, is afforded every opportunity. So that's really what you saw there that day. But I'd be happy to discuss it, explore it, and see what we can do to address a little bit of, I heard your plea for equity, and see what we can do to address that. I, for one, am happy to do it. I can't make any promises. We do need to follow Colorado law, but it's something that I'm willing to talk about.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Further commissioner comment?
Thank you for coming and speaking with us. I remember you from being here before, and you had a group of people and you were all very passionate. So thank you for coming that day to speak to us, and we certainly are always willing to see what we can do to better engage with our community.
Well, I would echo my fellow commissioners and just extend our gratitude to you for showing up again in the middle of the day. Listen, I'm the least important person in this room. My job is to be your servant, your public servant, and to listen to you, because you're the one that's paying for all this. It's your tax dollars that make all of this possible. So really, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that you are heard. I will tell you that we have often been told we are one of the most accountable and transparent governments in the state of Colorado, and that's not just talk. I mean, we've had 43 live town halls in about a year and a half where we've tried to engage citizens on issues that are important to them. And that's a little bit more free-form, where people have the opportunity to engage further. The purpose of the three-minute limitation, as you know from your board experience, is to ensure that other citizens have an opportunity to engage as well. But you make a good point, which is when you don't have a ton of citizens in the room, maybe there can be some flexibility there. I know, I don't want to get into the specifics of that hearing, and I think we certainly tried to allow people to go over, but as you've heard from our board, we want to listen and make sure that you are fully heard in our meetings. So thank you for being with us today. With that, is there any additional public comment? Okay, and any other commissioner comment?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, I will close, I've already closed citizen comment, we'll close commissioner comments and move on to our regular agenda. Item 4A, an item near and dear to my heart and many others, a resolution proclaiming May 11 through 17, 2022, as Law Enforcement Week in Douglas County, Colorado, in honoring...
A bit of a process, Chair. I wonder if you would be happy to accept a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Let's do that. And actually, before I do accept a motion on the consent agenda, let me just ask if there's any citizen comment on the consent agenda. Okay, hearing none. I'll close citizen comment on the consent agenda, and I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the requests in all items, A through AA, on the consent agenda.
Second?
There's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. I must have been in a rush to honor law enforcement. Man, that's exciting. Okay. With that, we will move on from our consent agenda to that item 4A. And I will begin again with that resolution proclaiming May 11 through 17, 2022, as Law Enforcement Week in Douglas County, Colorado, honoring the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Tony Spurlock, Sheriff, presenting on behalf of the Sheriff's Office. Welcome.
Welcome, commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to read this resolution. I want to start by saying a couple of things. Today is the 130th day of this year, and law enforcement across this country has lost 102 officers in the line of duty. Those numbers are, when you start looking at them, are incredibly saddening when you look at last year's number because of the impact of COVID and then just generally the impact of what has occurred in our country and the way that the relationship between law enforcement and its community. We are blessed here in Douglas County to have an incredible community that loves its law enforcement. There isn't a day that doesn't go by that I'm out in the community that citizens approach not only me, but my deputies thanking us for our service in this community. I'm blessed to work with three great chiefs of police that serve their communities in the cities, and having conversation with them, this is an important proclamation. This is something that is important to all law enforcement officers in the state of Colorado, and most particularly here, allowing me to read this proclamation for the men and women of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and the Lone Tree Police Department, Parker Police Department, and Castle Rock Police Department. So thank you for allowing me to do that. And commissioners, you read the title of the proclamation. I will start as, whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 22,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice by being killed in the line of duty. In Douglas County, Sergeant Wayne Bryant in 1978, Deputy Ron King in 1999, Deputy Zach Parrish in 2017, and Detective Joe Pollack in 2021 are the officers that have served the citizens of Douglas County and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes were added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021, 319 of those by COVID-related, and 147 officers of the previous year. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty honoring during the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund 34th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2022, and whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 11, 17 of this year. Whereas May 15 is designated as Police Officers Memorial Day in honoring of all the fallen officers and their families, the United States flag should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, and Douglas County, Colorado formally declares May 11 through 17, 2022, as Law Enforcement Week in Douglas County, and publicly salutes the service of all law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across this nation. And it is passed and adopted by this board on May 10, 2022, in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado. Thank you all for authoring this resolution, and thank you for voting on it and respecting the law enforcement officers of this community.
Sheriff, thank you so much for bringing that to us and reading that resolution. Any questions or comments for the sheriff?
I'll go ahead and, Sheriff, thanks so much for bringing this to us, and I love the title. And I love the fact of the way, the final phrase in the title of How Police Officers Safeguard a Democracy. And of course, we all know about protecting communities. We call the department public safety here at the county level and in the municipal levels. A lot of people are who... A lot of people are who, a lot of people who come to these things are used to me saying that government exists to do three things in America today, and provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty. What I usually don't have an opportunity to talk about is the why. And if we go a little further, and of course, those three things come from the preamble of the United States Constitution, of establishing, you know, what government does here in America. But the why, the why is called out in the very first line. We, the people of the United States of America, in order to form a more perfect union, establishing justice and domestic tranquility. It is that establishment of justice and peace that does indeed safeguard our democracy. So thank you very much for bringing this before us today, Sheriff. And sneak preview, I'm a yes vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Further Commissioner comment?
Yes, thank you for being here. Anyone who has ever worn a uniform and has gone through the death of a coworker understands the importance of this week. So this weekend, when I was reading my packet and I read this resolution, Ron King wasn't in it. And that was, you've amended it since then, so thank you. But when I was reading it over the weekend, I'm like, well, what happened to Ron? So for those of you who don't know Ron's story, Ron actually started as a Moffett County deputy and became a state trooper. And Ron and I worked together in Castle Rock. And I remember we were having breakfast one morning, and he told me that he had applied for the Douglas County Sheriff's Department and was leaving the State Patrol. And I begged him not to leave, because he was such a good trooper. And then later, when I learned what had happened on Highway 85 outside the Matchbox Bar, when anybody who worked that stretch of 85, Tony knew the Matchbox Bar, right? And so I was, when I came in this morning and saw that there was an updated resolution, I was very pleased to see that, because Ron was my friend. And then I'll just add that on January 22, 2001, another trooper was killed on I-70, Jason Manspeaker. I was a major in the State Patrol then, and I went up to help at that scene. And I was asked to go with Jason to the coroner's office. And I remember taking his firearm and his badge, and then going up to his house and giving his badge to his wife, Stephanie. And so those are the kinds of things you never forget. So thank you for bringing this here today, and our community joins all of you in honoring all of law enforcement. Thank you.
Well, Sheriff, you know, people come to Douglas County because it's safe. This is a place that has a reputation for being peaceable, for being law-abiding, where kids can grow up. Oftentimes, we hear from outsiders, what do you grow on Highlands Ranch? They're like, kids. And the kids feel safe there. I've raised my three kids in Douglas County, and I know that my family has benefited from your incredible work and leadership. So I want to thank you for your leadership as sheriff of this fine organization. In Douglas County, we fund the police. We don't defund the police. And I hope that the experience of law enforcement in Douglas County is one of collaboration, of partnership, of belief in the men and women that give their lives on the front lines to keep that reputation of safety continuing. For me, and I know for most of us at the county, those that work in the employ of Douglas County and work for the Sheriff's Office are to be treated with the highest level of respect. They are to be lauded, cared for. They are not political pawns. They are to be honored. And I'm really pleased to honor them today and every day of the year. So thank you to you and everyone here from the Sheriff's Office that's here. We really appreciate you. With that, I will bring it out to citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment on this resolution? Troy, do we have any comment online?
I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming May 11 to 17, 2022, as Law Enforcement Week in Douglas County, Colorado, and honoring the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you. With that, we'll move to our second item on the regular agenda, which is a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month. Brittany Castle, our curator from the Department of Community Development. Hi, Brittany.
Hi, good afternoon. I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to present this to you. I will read the resolution for the record. As a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month, whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation created Preservation Week in 1971 to spotlight grassroots preservation efforts in America. It has grown into an annual celebration observed by small towns and big cities with events ranging from architectural and historic tours and award ceremonies to fundraising events, educational programs, and heritage travel opportunities. And whereas the National Trust has extended the celebration to the entire month of May and declared it Preservation Month to provide an even longer opportunity to celebrate the diverse and unique heritage of our country's cities and states, and enable more Americans to become involved in the growing preservation movement. The first official Preservation Month was observed in 2005. Whereas the National Historic Preservation Act has had a profound impact on Colorado and historic places listed on the Douglas County State and National Registers contribute to the revitalization and recognition of communities through heritage tourism and the preservation of historic places, which honor the diverse cultural, agricultural, natural, and built environments of our state. And whereas in Colorado, Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month is a celebration of our state's heritage. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners from the County of Douglas, State of Colorado hereby proclaim May 2022 shall be commemorated as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month.
Brittany, thank you so much for reading that resolution. Any comments or questions from the board?
So Brittany, thank you for talking about this. Douglas County and Castle Rock have very rich histories. And I've been to the repository, and I've seen some of the things you have there. I mean, it's amazing, the history and the great people that started this community for us. So thank you for helping us remember that. I remember in sixth grade, when my history teacher walked in the first day and put something on the board about why it's important to learn history so you don't repeat it. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Further Commissioner comment?
Well, you know me, I'm a big history geek. So I, thanks, Brittany, for bringing this before us to commemorate this month as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month. I think the, obviously, this is a topic that's not nearly as somber, not nearly as serious as the one that we just dealt with, with our law enforcement community. At the same time, we always got to remember, our history goes back just over a century here in Douglas County. And it's a brief history, but it's also very fragile. Very little of our history is carved in marble. Very little of it is laid in stone. And it is, the importance of this proclamation is the call to action for us all to do our part, for us all to learn a little bit about the community we live in, and understand that it's brief, it's not long. There are certainly other communities in this, on this continent, whose history goes back much farther, hundreds of years. But it's always very fragile. So thank you, Brittany, for bringing this to us. And I challenge and charge everyone, let this proclamation be a call to action to do your part and help preserve that brief and fragile history that we have.
And Brittany, I would just echo that. It's an honor to have somebody with your level of education and expertise serving Douglas County and its citizens. We always appreciate your comments as they relate to land use in the county, and specifically appreciate your invitation to the board to look at the historic repository and ensure that our important artifacts are in a climate-controlled facility. So I know I'm looking forward to more partnership with our Douglas County libraries to ensure that our young people have the ability to learn more about our history. So thank you very much. Do we have any citizen comment on this item? Do we have any citizen comment online?
No, sir. No online comment.
Okay. Thank you, Troy. And with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Sheriff, it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming May 2022 as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month.
Second.
There's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we'll move to item 4C on today's regular agenda. It's a resolution declaring May 15 through 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week in Douglas County, Colorado. A lot of great celebrations today. And we have Janet Herman, our Director of Public Works in Engineering, here with us.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. This resolution recognizes the vital contribution our public works professionals make every day to our communities, and it invites the public to celebrate our great employees on their quiet dedication and indispensable influence on our way of life. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. It's a resolution declaring May 15 through the 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week in Douglas County. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Douglas County. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are federally mandated first responders and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation system, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, whereas it is the public, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Douglas County to gain knowledge of and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works first responders and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas this year's national theme for the 62nd Annual Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, is ready for resilience. To recognize always our public works professionals carry out their daily tasks while being prepared to respond to weather events by plowing snow or to emergencies such as digging fire lines during the wildfires. And now be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas that the week of May 15 through the 21, 2020, shall be recognized as National Public Works Week in Douglas County, Colorado, as we pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, recognizing the substantial contributions they make to protecting the health, safety, and quality of life of the citizens and taxpayers of Douglas County. And I would just like to point out, we have several of our public works employees here in the audience, and I kind of counted up the years of service. We have over 500 years of service with just the few people that are in this room as we speak. So if they could all kind of stand up and be recognized, that would be great.
Any questions or comments from the board?
You know, Janet, thank you, and thank you for everyone who's here. We hear lots of concerns, complaints, and thank yous about the roads in this county, because everybody drives on the roads. And you all have just done such a good job maintaining the roads. Usually, our agendas are full of projects to approve, the things you've brought forward. But, you know, did any of you see the video that Kurt did last month with me and the little kid? I mean, that was amazing. This little boy had been watching your crew do some concrete work, and Kurt had him come out and work on the concrete himself. And so we did a video about that, because it was a way of telling the public that your moms, your dads, your next-door neighbors, and when they're driving in a construction zone, slow down and keep you all safe, because you're just like someone's grandma and grandpa. And that video was so great. But it really encapsulates who each and every one of you are in public work. So thank you for what you do for us.
Further Commissioner comment?
I was actually, I'll confess, I was actually in a conversation earlier today on a subject of public interest. And I said, I was kind of already done with this conversation, five minutes. I'd really rather go give Art Griffith the call and talk about transportation issues for about three or four hours. So I think this is great. And Art, you always keep it entertaining, so I appreciate it. But you guys do great work. It's something we hear often, even when the conversation starts with complaining about a pothole, or ice being cleared, or any of the innumerable tasks that you guys do. It always comes back around to that very same person who does have a complaint, giving a host of other compliments. So great work. Keep it up. We are absolutely counting on each and every one of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. You know, earlier I said that people come to Douglas County because it's safe. I think it's also safe to say they stay here because of public works and they're able to get around. You know, we often hear about the roads and the work that your department does on a daily basis. I've shared this story with public works in the past, but one of my favorite news segments on Ni News is when the reporters were all talking in the wintertime about how tough it is in Denver to get around. And man, I wish, you know, they'd clear the snow out of the way. And Cory Rose, who's from Douglas County, said, well, you know, in my area, it's fine. The roads are always clear. And I think that's indicative of the experience that the day-to-day citizen has in Douglas County. So thank you for the incredible work. And I know Rod Meredith was also given a significant award at Colorado Counties this last year, which brought a lot of pride and honor to Douglas County. So thank you for that. Do we have any citizen comment on this item? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution declaring May 15 through the 21, 2022, National Public Works Week in Douglas County, Colorado.
Second.
I have a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. And with that, we'll move from item four to item five. Is there any other business before us today? Seeing none, we'll move to item six, the county manager and his report. Anything from the county manager? Okay. And with that, we'll move to Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments?
So I'd like to go through the county manager's report and bring back and just report to everybody something if they can't get through the whole 600 and some pages that were in the pack-up for today. I think this board did some really good work on May 3, when we met with Dr. Stephanie Crawford from the school district. And we had given them almost $1 million in mental health support programs, to support mental health programs after the STEM shooting. And they came to us and said, you know, we have one community response team for schools, but we'd like to give you $417,000 back so that you can give us a second community response teams. That first school, that first team is only supporting 52 of the 92 schools. After this team gets started this fall, we'll have a team available for all the schools in this county. And I'll tell you one quick story. When I met with the community response team for kids, they told me that they had a young man who went to his SRO during the day and said, I just want you to know that I'm going to take my life this afternoon. I have a plan. My girlfriend is pregnant. I'm trying to break up with her, and I don't know what to do. So the SRO got ahold of the youth response team, and the youth response team met with this kid, this young man, right away. And he actually had a plan. He was ready to take his life that night. And they got him into a treatment facility, got him back on track, found out that his girlfriend was not pregnant. She was trying to keep him from leaving her. He's now in college. He's doing so well. So that's just an example of the great work that we do, and we work together with the school district and the law enforcement that teams on the community response team. So I would just like to let the public know that we started this meeting with some students telling us about mental health needs, and we're going to come close to the end of it talking about still taking care of youth in our school and their mental health needs. Thank you.
Further Commissioner comment?
No, sir.
And I have none either. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.